Well, welcome, everybody. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We observe the invocation with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, clerk, will you call the roll?
Corliss.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Stead.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
All present.
And next up, we've got minutes for approval.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the minutes for the meeting on October 7th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion second, clerk?
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Stead.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. We've got two items under special business. First off is interim budget changes. I'm going to propose, Alicia's here, welcome Alicia. We have the memo. Are there any questions for Alicia related to it? Otherwise, I'll take a motion for approval. No questions? All right.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the interim budget changes as not presented by staff?
Second.
They're presented by staff and a memo.
Oh, excuse me. It's presented by staff and the memo.
Second.
Do we have a roll call? Okay, clerk?
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Stead.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries?
Thanks. And now we have the reappointment of Pat Paz to our city's Electrical Code Board for a four-year term. Is Mr. Paz with us, Pat? All right. Well, I want to thank Pat for the service he's already provided and his willingness to serve another term.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for the reappointment of Pat Paz to the City of Boise Electrical Code Board for a four-year term ending October 15th, 2029.
Without objection. All right, now we will move into the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion a second, clerk?
Madam Mayor.
Oh, sorry. Yep.
Yeah, there is one item on there that I just want to highlight, item number 15 on the consent agenda and its agreement with Janice to fund our Neighbors United Collective Impact Group. And I just want to bring it up because I want, I think, council to know, you know, what it is, what it's about. I've served as the Neighbors United Council Liaison since I've been on council, and then I actually served as one of their committee chairs for about 10 years before that. So I've been around this group since it started. What it is, it's a refugee resettlement collective impact group. It's all the different refugee resettlement organizations, different agencies like ACHD, VRT, churches, people who are helping folks find jobs, find housing. They played a central role in making sure that during COVID, that safe and accurate COVID vaccination information was available to the refugee community. This is like the best investment I think that the city can possibly make as far as working collectively with these partners to address the needs of our refugee community and more importantly, allow the strength of the refugee community to come to Boise and for us to all benefit from it. It's saved lives, it's created jobs, it's created businesses. It's done so much for our community. And so I just want to highlight the importance of this and my honor to serve as the council liaison to this group. It's also welcome to any other city council member who would ever like to attend and swing in and check it out. It's one of the more emotional, fun and joyful meetings that you'll go to.
Thanks for highlighting that. Clerk?
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Stead.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries?
Thank you. And now we'll move into first reading.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on first reading be read by number and title only and filed for the second reading calendar?
Without objection.
ORD-35-25 in ordinance ZOA 21-2, amending Title 11, Chapter 7, Boise City Code to add Section 4 Muriel Farm Specific Plan, adopting the Muriel Farm Specific Plan and providing an effective date. ORD-36-25 in ordinance CAR 21-22 for property located at 7421 South Maple Grove Road, annexing 380.7 acres for certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, adjacent and contagious to the corporate limits of the City of Boise City, establishing and determining the land use classification of said 380.7 acres as SP-04 Muriel Farm Specific Plan, establishing and determining the sensitive lands overlay district of said acres, setting forth a reasoned statement in support of such annexation and zone change, directing the city engineer to lodge and file a legal description and map for said annexed lands and territory, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Auditor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, providing that a copy of said legal description and map of said annexed lands and territory be reported with the Ada County Recorder and filed with the Ada County Assessor and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing an effective date.
Thank you. And nothing on second, but we've got two on third.
Madam Mayor, I move that further reading of ORD-33-25 and ORD-34-25 be dispensed with, and the record reflect they have been read the third time in full.
Second.
We have a motion a second, clerk?
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Stead.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries?
Madam Mayor, I moved it.
They need to be read.
Oh, excuse me, sorry.
ORD-33-25 in ordinance CAR 25-4 for property located at 2626 and 2680 South Maple Grove Road, amending zoning classifications of the City of Boise City to change the classification of real property particularly described in Section 1 of this ordinance and adjacent rights of way from R-1A residential large lot to R-1C residential traditional, setting forth a reasoned statement in support of such zone change and providing an effective date. ORD-34-25 in ordinance ZOA 25-4, amending Title 11, Chapter 7, Section 2, Boise City Code to add live/work as an allowed use within certain sub-districts of the Barber Valley Specific Plan area to increase the maximum dwelling units per acre within the SP-02-0C sub-district of the Barber Valley Specific Plan area and providing an effective date.
Madam Mayor, I move that ORD-33-25 and ORD-34-25 be approved.
Second.
We have a motion a second, clerk?
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Stead.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries?
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move into new business. We've got one subdivision tonight. We've got Jesse Lyle from staff to present. Welcome. The applicant is Ben Simple. Hello again. We don't expect the Neighborhood Association to sunset here or online. All right. Is anybody here to testify on this item? Great. What I'll do is see if you're in agreement with terms and conditions of the staff report. If council doesn't have questions, we might be able to just move along.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. The item for you is SUB 2534. This is a preliminary plat for residential subdivision comprised of four buildable lots on 0.47 acres located at 2705 North 32nd Street in the R1C Zone. As outlined in the project report, all lots within the Camille subdivision meet the dimensional standards of the R1C Zone. The applicant is proposing to provide a 10-foot wide detached sidewalk along 32nd Street as required by the development code. The proposal includes four duplex-style townhomes and will share driveways onto 32nd Street, reducing the access points to two rather than four. A variance was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission to weigh the subdivision requirements to provide a frontage road instead of direct access to the collector roadway, and additionally, all three mitigation requirements will be met. As detailed in the project report, the Planning and Zoning Commission finds the application is consistent with the subdivision requirements and recommends approval. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Madam Mayor, I've got a question for staff. On this, could you tell me about the access points, why there are two? Is that our policy or ACHDs? And are each of these separate units? And does that interplay with the curb cuts there?
Madam Mayor, council members, so any subdivision that takes access off a collector or an arterial road does require a frontage road. That was what the variance was for, that the Planning and Zoning Commission approved. I do have a slide that shows approximately what that would look like of the frontage road here, and they did approve that variance because essentially that frontage road would reduce the buildable lot area and provide a lot more pavement. So the applicant instead proposed to combine those driveways to reduce the access points to two, similar to a frontage road, and that would, again, reduce the paving overall.
All right. So the frontage road requirement is that our requirement or is that ACHDs?
Madam Mayor, council members, yes, that's a requirement of our development code.
I won't ask you if that makes sense, but that I'm asking it, I think it's something for us to look at.
I would propose that we put that in a parking lot, a thing to look at. All right. Anything else? And the applicant, are you in agreement with?
Madam Mayor, do you have a question for the applicant? I'm sorry.
All right.
Ben, it's good to see you. I'll start asking my question now. Do you know the size of the actual units, square footage?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, you know, we had provided just kind of a footprint, kind of a building envelope. Knowing the builder, I'm guessing that these homes will be somewhere in the 2,000 to 2,500 square foot range, but that's about as far as I have gotten so far.
Okay, great. That's all I need. Thanks.
And while you're here, are you in agreement with terms and conditions of the staff report?
Madam Mayor, yes, we are.
All right. I'm going to confirm nobody's here on this one, and I'll close this item. Thank you. Okay, motion.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of SUB 25-34, a preliminary plat for residential subdivision located at 2705 North 32nd Street comprised of four buildable lots on 0.47 acres in an R1C, so.
A second? We have a motion and a second discussion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just a couple of quick comments. One, I think that is a great location for infill, right next to the park. It's a great spot to be putting some families in there. The reason I asked about the size of the units, I'm just really excited to see more smaller units. I don't know if I would consider these smaller, but I'm hoping that more and more we start seeing our 1,200 square foot units that are out there, and I want to make sure that I voice appreciation for staff or some flexibility in working with this variance and trying to figure out a way forward to make something like this work. Obviously, the frontage road, you know, isn't really an option that would get us, you know, some of those units for infill that we'd like to see, and hopefully opens up the door for some smaller developers in the future to get even smaller units into a spot like this, more units, smaller ones that are affordable for folks. So thank you.
All right. If only we could have a picture that would make the variance so simple every time. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Stead.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries?
Thank you. Good evening. Okay, so next up, we've got CR 25-16. David Moser is with us tonight for the city. Welcome, Ms. Thompson from the Land Group, South Cole Neighborhood Association. I don't see SD. Is SD online? Anybody else subbing for SD? I didn't have public expected. Is anybody here to testify on this item? You are, great. Are you Brent Garcia? I've got your name. Sorry, I didn't check that beforehand. So what we'll do is we'll hear from staff, we'll hear from the applicant, we'll open it to the public, and we'll take it from there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The applicant is requesting a comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use designation from suburban to industrial and to rezone approximately 4.17 acres of the subject property located at 25 or 2653 South Victory View Way from an R1A AIO FPO, which would be a residential large lot, airport influence area and floodplain protection overlay area, to an I1 AIO FPO, which would be industrial light with airport influence area overlay and floodplain protection overlay. The subject property is located within an industrial area east of Maple Grove Road and north of Victory Road, and is surrounded by industrial uses to the west and south, residential neighborhoods to the northwest, north and east. These residential neighborhoods are separated from the subject property by Five Mile Creek, which extends along the northeast side of the site. Only the northeast portion of the four, which is 4 point or 4.17 acres of the site, will be affected by this request. This slide shows the required finding approvals for the comprehensive plan amendment. I will show these six findings again at the end of the presentation, so there's no need to read them right now. And these are the, this slide shows the required findings for the approval for a rezone. Once again, I will show these, these findings again at the end of the presentation. I will start with the history of the site. The split zone parcel was created through a record of survey. The record of survey was approved in 2023, and it adjusted the property line between the subject property and the adjacent residential parcel to the east. The property line was moved to the north side of Five Mile Creek, which creates a natural barrier between the industrial and residential areas. Changing the 4.117 acre portion of the site to industrial land use designation in an I1 zone is compatible with the comprehensive plan, since the properties on the west, to the west of Five Mile Creek can only be accessed through the adjacent industrial neighborhood to the south. Therefore, the existing suburban land use designation in a R1A zone is not consistent with the adjacent industrial uses. The comprehensive plan supports the proposed land use amendment to change the subject property from suburban to industrial and the rezone from residential to industrial. In summary, the comprehensive plan would protect this, this existing industrial area between Maple Grove and Coal Road from residential encroachment into the area. It will also allow current businesses to expand to provide employment opportunities, which will benefit the general welfare of the community. This slide shows the impact of Five Mile Creek on the subject property, the surrounding and the surrounding area. Five Mile Creek greatly limits how the area on the west side of the creek can be redeveloped. Restricting this area to an industrial use is compatible with the adjacent industrial area because the subject property is accessed through the industrial areas to the south. The floodway of Five Mile Creek, which is the area marked in blue, creates a natural barrier that can only be crossed with public infrastructure, and constructing a public road over Five Mile Creek would require a bridge, which would be very costly. The development code requires the comprehensive plan amendments to comply with the required, these required findings. In summary, the findings require that the comprehensive plan amendment to provide for public convenience and general welfare, that there has to be a change in condition in the area, and that it is consistent with the goals and policy of the comprehensive plan. As discussed within the project report, the amendment will increase the supply of industrial land within the Maple Grove and Coal Roads area near the airport and will protect the industrial area from encroachment by incompatible uses. The change of the area was approved, was approved through a rec, or the change in the area was, was done through a record of survey, which created the split zone parcel, and the original comprehensive plan map didn't take into consideration the impacts of the associated Five Mile Creek. Finally, the request is consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. This slide once again shows the required findings for rezone, and as discussed within the project report, the rezone complies with the required findings. This includes a technical error in the map associated with the split zone parcel, and the zoning map, the original zoning map, didn't take into consideration the impacts associated with Five Mile Creek and the difficulty of crossing it, and that it creates a natural barrier between the residential and industrial neighborhoods. In summary, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezone. Thank you.
Madam Mayor? Yes.
Hi, David. Thank you for the summary on this. Can you talk to us a little bit about building in an area designated as a floodway or floodplain?
Definitely. Madam Mayor, members of the council, you can definitely build in there, but it's going to have to comply with the city's floodplain requirements code, which is a model ordinance of FEMA, of FEMA standards. So any development in there will have to be elevated two feet above base flood. So where, and there is, there are documents downstairs that FEMA gives us that tells you where that base flood elevation is, and then every, every structure will have to be two feet above that. So you can develop in it. It's just all the structures have to, have to be elevated up so that they don't flood in case, in case there is a flood along, along Five Mile.
Madam Mayor, thanks, David. Can you go back to the map that shows that floodway and the floodplain? Thank you. So I know this area is supported a lot by irrigation by there that helps support the aquifer in the area as well. So is there something within our code that talks about how that drainage, if you were to build over, or I understand you'll be elevated. Is there anything that has to be, I guess, done with the creek or in that area to protect the water and ensure that it's still providing irrigation?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, our code and I think FEMA standards basically dictate that you cannot touch the floodway. So the actual blue area where the creek is, is off limits. You cannot touch it.
Okay.
I mean, only public infrastructure, such as like public roads, things of that nature, sewer utilities can go in there, and if they do happen, then there is a whole analysis that's required to indicate that there's no rise within, that's going to be created by doing so. And of course, the Corps of Engineers and the state IWR would look at this to ensure like water quality is being met.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. David, one more question. If we look at the subdivision right above it, I think it's been there about 17 years. There's actual pathway that leaves from that subdivision, but there's, there's not a lot of connection. It's right where it shows the 8535. Sorry, I had to even look closer myself.
About here?
Yes, and you see that little strip between those, those two houses. That's actually a paved connection that goes behind the houses. I imagine at some point in time that that was put in there to connect a future subdivision or development behind it.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you are probably correct. That was the case. Also, our pathway master plan does show a pathway connecting along Five Mile Creek itself. Although we could, we would, we would get that pathway easement in when they actually came in, developed, or did an expansion of this industrial area. And then through that planning process, we could request that they give us an easement across their property. And I suspect at that point, then maybe that pathway from that neighborhood could connect into that future multi-use path.
Yeah, because I'm looking at the, the corner. I mean, it's kind of an interesting shaped property, but where that red line follows kind of right at top, you're going into a roadway. I think it's Bub Lane that's owned by Idaho Power, and they're developing that into a pathway. So I'm just trying to figure out how do we take a look at maybe putting a pathway across there, but yeah, I guess that's it for my questions, David. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, so yes, David, there is certainly parts of the pathway plan that we've actually already built out in some cases along Five Mile Creek, you know, through development, through some other things. How far does it go down Five Mile Creek? Would it actually run through this property? I wasn't able to pull up the actual pathways master plan, so I don't know if it ends before or if it actually runs through it and continues.
Nice. Madam Mayor, members of the council, the land use map actually calls out the future pathway, and it's marked as that dash line. So it does extend through this property right along the creek itself.
Great. And so since it's in the pathways master plan, that easement would be provided in the future when there was development. We don't need to put that on here now because that's part of the, that'll be part of the later stages that's required for building along the pathways master plan.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that is correct. With rezones such as this or comp plan amendment, we generally don't, we generally cannot attach conditions to that unless there's a DA and there's no development agreement associated with this.
Yeah, I think all the rest of the questions are all for developer.
Okay, great. Do you have something?
I think he answered it.
All right. Yeah, I'll just say on this one, I want, I want to make sure that whatever notes are recorded with this, well, it can't be a condition that we not lose track of that in the future when development occurs. Okay, we will now hear from Over. Welcome. It's been a little while.
It has been a while. Madam Mayor, members of council, Tamara Thompson. I'm with the Land Group. Our office is at 462 East Shore Drive in Eagle. I'm here tonight with my client, Michael Campbell, with Arc Data Centers. We're pleased to present the comp plan amendment and the rezone for this property. I do, oh, there it is.
There's a clicker there, I think.
Yes, thank you. Let's see here. I'm going to try not to duplicate, duplicate David as much as possible. So just real quickly, the project site is approximately 12.6 acres. It was eight acres until 2023, and then it was expanded to the 12.6 acres. Arc Data Centers has been operating on the site since 2014, and they purchased the additional adjacent property in 2020. The access to the site is through the industrial area from Victory Road and then Victory View Way. And then there is that secondary access, which is that Bub Lane that we were talking about. Idaho Power has that, that accesses their substation that is immediately to the north. That's that kind of little jog out of, of that northern property there. And here's just kind of a, a different view that shows you how, how the access is to the property. The, and then we just made some, the top left is the access to the site. There's kind of a little bulb out, if you will, in the road, and then it's down a long driveway to get back to the site. So you can hardly even see it from, from the main road, and then just the property itself, the, the top right is the substation and Bub Lane, and then the other two are the additional kind of showing off to the east and how far away the residential properties are. The the property currently is, has two different comp plan designations. 63% of the property is in an industrial zone where 37% is in the suburban zone. The Five Mile is a natural buffer to the residential uses. The residential zone does come to the south side of that, but the use itself is on the north side of that Five Mile buffer, and that buffer is approximately where that, where we were talking about the floodway itself that you can't develop in. That is, fluctuates in that area between 100 and 140 feet in width. And then the zoning itself is the exact same. It's 63% is in the industrial zone and 37% is in the R1A zone. And then the project site is again bounded by the Five Mile Creek to the north and to the northeast, and here's just kind of, that's David's map. And then here's what the future of this is with the new zoning code. The industrial for this size of a project, it has buffers now based on the size of property, and for this size of property, it's a 100-foot setback from industrial to residential. So we dashed in how big that setback would actually be to the adjacent properties. And to most of those, to the, to the north where the, where the Five Mile Canal is, most of that is in that, in that floodway area.
The 100 feet setback.
Yes, yes.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, can you, so the setbacks that you're talking about are the, like, second perforated line?
If I point to this, you can't see that. So I can't point to anything.
Can you point to that one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So.
Oh, there we go. Thank you.
So these dash lines there, that's the 100-foot setback. So, so that, that line is the property line, and then that's the 100-foot setback that's required by city code now.
And Madam Mayor, the red is then the floodplain, is that right?
The red is the floodway.
Unbuildable floodway.
Way.
Yeah, thank you.
Those get confusing with way and plain, but that is the floodway. And so along that northern portion, a lot of that's taken up in that area, but, but there is 100-foot setback with, with the new code, and it is a graduated scale with how large the property is. But, but there is a hundred foot setback with, with the new code, and it is a graduated scale with how large the property is. We have read the staff report. We agree with staff's analysis. And we agree with planning and zoning's recommended condition or recommended approval. And we respectfully request your approval tonight, and we will stand for questions.
Thanks, Tamara. Questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Tamara, when do you, when does your client plan to develop this?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Nash, we currently are in for a permit for, you want to look over here? This is the only one I can point to that you can see is this little yard right here. We're currently in for a permit for that. So we just received first round comments on that, actually this morning, coincidentally. So they will start on that right away. And then the rest of it's going to be, going to be phased. And I don't know, do you, do we have a timeline on that? We don't have a timeline on those.
Would you be willing, I don't think we can require it today, but would you be willing to grant an easement to the city for the pathway on that property voluntarily prior to the development application, given that there's no timetable for them?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Nash, I would want to look at exactly where that aligns with and who pays for that bridge going across, because I believe that if, is it just getting across to Bub Lane and, and an easement and?
Madam Mayor, could David, I guess we don't have David slide up. David has a line that shows where the pathway easement would be proposed. Could we pull that up to show the applicant?
I did that alignment and it looked like it was on the north side. But then there was, there was discussion about getting it to Bub Lane. And so there's a crossing there that needs to happen. So I think there's some discussions that need to happen on that.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, yeah, thank you. We were kind of talking, we do have a, a pathway, future pathway map. As you can see where the dotted line is on the right-hand side of the screen. As I think was what called President Nash was referencing. Earlier, what I was referencing is really it's in your setback where Bub Lane comes in and you can see that small, it, it's really a little path, yeah, right there is already a pathway developed to the back. Connecting that over to Bub Lane would be really helpful for kids getting, getting to school. But of course, there's, I, I think it's already in your setback anyways, that can't be built there at this time. I'm thinking this could be, could be a project for a pathway in the future. So I guess it's just something to keep in mind. Please.
Say, say your name.
My name's Mike Campbell with ARC Data Centers. Thank you.
I can't quite hear you. I think you might just.
Sorry, Mike Campbell with ARC Data Centers.
Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I believe the pathway you're talking about would cross this, the top of this to connect there to Bub Lane, correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Yeah, that is directly north of our retention pond that we have existing there. There's no plan of.
I, I need you to talk into the.
I'm sorry.
I mean, we can hear you, but the record can't, and it's a weird thing. We can hear you.
So yes, we have no plan on building in that northern quadrant. Our retention pond is there right now. So yeah, I don't see an issue with that.
And then the second question, what Council President Nash was asked, that dotted line on the right-hand side represents our pathway plan. And as some designated time in the future, we're looking at developing that pathway. And I believe Council President Nash asked, we were asking for is an easement for that pathway?
As it. Oh, yeah. No issue with that either.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Tamara? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now open it up for the public. Come on up.
Hello, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Brent Garcia. I reside at two, three, three, seven, South Three Mile Creek Way, just immediately to the east of the property development. Wanted to bring up a couple considerations, concerns that we have. I'm not opposed to the project in general. I see there was an amendment from my previous renderings that I saw to include the hundred foot setback, so no issues there. But just so we're clear, we do use our property. So the property is a five acre lot. It's been stated multiple times that it has no access, and that is true for six months out of the year. The water is fed by the New York Canal, which is used as irrigation, but as it dries out, we do utilize the land. I'm currently working with the Army Corps of Engineers to get approval for a culvert accessway so we can continue our homesteading and our kids can have access to the back of the property. So I just wanted to make some notes on that. Also, I'm not opposed to partnering with ARC and taking into consideration to get this additionally rezone for commercial if we can grant some type of easement or accessway to utilize our section of the property as well. So there is a unique back section that is not accessible from the commercial side without accessing through ARC's current property. With consideration, anything that we would want to develop in the future, if we have opportunity to put utilities that are easy to access for future development, I would request that we take that into consideration as well.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Question for you. Yeah, thanks so much for coming out here tonight. We're neighbors. I live in this area as well. I was looking at this and I've been by this property lots and lots of times. And I know that of that five acre parcel you have, I see on the record to the county, one point six of it is designated as wasteland. Is that this back area that is in the, the floodway, do you know?
My understanding is the one point six acreage is just the, that section in the middle of my property where the waterway runs through. So I don't believe the back end, that section that you could see in the
So it's where it's coming through your property?
Correct.
Is that right?
That's my understanding of that.
Okay. And you're working with the Army Corps of Engineers to see what can be done to access that back part? So today, do you use the part that's kind of shown in purple?
So my kids, they do ride their scooters around and anytime the waterway isn't there, they enjoy the back part of our, our property. We do have plans to continue our homesteading and develop it as much as the city will permit us and allow us. But getting access there six months out of the year is tough as it dries out. It's, it's a great, great way for us to use additionally on the backside of our property. We have immediate access to our training facility that we spend twenty hours a week at. So anytime we have immediate access to just cross the fence line to train, it's perfect for our kids.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else here for this item? Anybody online? All right. Are there further questions for staff? Or the applicant? Anything you'd like to wrap up with, Tamara, as the applicant?
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'll just, I'll just mention one thing with regard to Mr. Garcia is that my client does want, want to be a good neighbor. And so they, they plan on maintaining that hundred foot setback as long as it is a residential use and that they have been in contact with him and will continue to work with him. You know, as much as possible. So we respectfully request your approval tonight. Thank you.
That I will close public here.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of CAR twenty-five dash sixteen and CPA twenty-five dash six, a comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use designation from suburban to industrial and rezone approximately four point one seven acres located at two, six, five, three, South Victory View Way.
Second motion?
We have a motion, a second discussion.
Madam Mayor, does this include the airport influencer overlay? Councilmember stood?
Yeah, it would be from R1A. Like you're just making me say all these.
Oh, thanks. Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor?
It was noted in the motion.
Yep. Just kind of noting something. This is kind of like the second week in a row where we looked at something and we're like, oh, if there was a DA on here, we can make sure one of those easements existed. And it may, may be a good fit. It may not. It looks like a really complicated lot, you know, with the floodway, with everything else that's going on there. But it is nice, I think, for council to have that ability to, if there is something that's identified, to locate it, to address any other sort of concerns that may emerge. And so I just want to note that, that there are some limitations. I do think that since the Five Mile Creek is outlined in the pathways master plan that we, that is baked into the plan. So we have those easements that will come in the future meetings. But the bub one is a little bit different because it's not located on the pathways master plan. But again, I would ask, you know, the developer, they sound agreeable. It's inside that one hundred foot setback that if there is an opportunity there in the future that we look at providing some connection, because somebody could pop over from that neighborhood and avoid having to get on, is it Victory that's up there? And then just get over to, yeah, Victor or Targi and potentially get over to Maple Grove and be able to access some other things like Molinar Skate Park and stuff without having to go through a bunch of different areas. So something that could be great for the neighborhood. Just wanted to note that.
Madam Mayor, I'll just add, this is a little bit of a making the sausage moment, but we have had conversations with staff about including DA's development agreements on these type of rezones. Just for that reason, that came out of last week's meeting. So it wasn't implemented as this application has already been through the process. But, you know, we want to continue to be as considerate as we can for the existing neighbors while we're, I don't know, while we're prioritizing the needs of a growing city at the same time. So I look forward to having a little bit more of that. I mean, we, we have really agreeable applicant here, so we very much appreciate that. But in case we don't, we hopefully will have some mechanisms for that moving forward.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, I, I, I support this rezone and I think it is a good fit for the area. I think having that residential designation, as city staff rightfully noted, it would just be challenging. And so changing that with the consideration of Five Mile Creek from the residential to the industrial is, is a really good fit. And I'm glad to see this project before us and appreciate you being agreeable to work with the neighbors. And also consideration for the easement for the pathway and close up there by the Bub Lane also. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Clerk?
Hallie Burton?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Stead?
Yes.
Willetts?
Yes.
Corliss?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries?
Thanks. Next up, we've got CAR twenty-five dash six. David Mosher is back with staff. Ben Semple didn't leave. I was wrong in saying goodbye. The, we don't, is Judy Herman here, the West Valley Neighborhood Association? Judy, are you online? Is anybody from West Valley online? And I had notes here that the public was expected. Is anybody here to testify on this item? Anybody online? Okay, well, we'll start with staff. We'll move to the applicant. We'll take it from there. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The applicant requests a rezone of approximately one point three five acres from R1C residential additional to MX one, mixed use neighborhood, and a preliminary platform residential subdivision comprised of one common lot, twenty-one buildable lots located at one, one, zero, seven, six, West Arch Street. The subject property is located on the south side of Eustick Road, approximately a quarter mile west of the Eustick Road and Five Mile Road intersection, just outside the radius of that neighborhood activity center. The historic townhome site is located approximately six hundred and sixty, or the Eustick, historic Eustick Townhome Site is located approximately six hundred and sixty feet to the west of the property. And the existing neighborhood consists primarily of residential developments comprised of single family homes to multifamily developments along Eustick Road. Bus route number twenty-seven runs along Eustick Road, and there's a bus stop approximately a quarter mile to the west and to the east of the subject property. This slide shows the required findings for approval of a rezone. And once again, I will show these slides again at the end of the, or these, this slide again at the end of the presentation. The subject property is designated mixed use on the future land use map. This land use designation supports the proposed MX one zone. The mixed use designation allows for many different types of zoning from residential mixed use industrial. However, the requested MX one zone is appropriate in this location as the property is located along an arterial roadway with public transit, and it's about six hundred and sixty feet from the Eustick Townsite, which contains commercial uses. In addition, the comprehensive plan encourages high-density mixed use infill developments along Eustick Road and near the Eustick Townsite. Also, the MX one is consistent with the historic zoning of the property. The north half of the subject property along Eustick Road was zoned C one, neighborhood commercial in the legacy code. This C one zone was similar in the, to the proposed MX, MX, MX one zone in terms of use and intensity. This slide shows the subdivision layout and the, and the lots meet all the dimensional requirements of the MX, MX one zone. The project design includes approximately a three hundred and thirty foot long private street, which will provide access to sixteen townhome buildable lots. The private street will connect into a two-way private alley on the north side of the site. The private street is constructed as a twenty-eight foot wide street section measured from back of curb, back of curb, eight foot wide landscape buffer, five foot detached sidewalks on both sides. This complies with the development code standards. The private seat terminates at a private alley in the north side of the property, which will provide access to an eight-unit multifamily building and four live-work units. The, the alley is oriented east-west. The development code requires two-way alleys to be twenty feet wide, and the proposed alley is twenty-four feet wide with attached sidewalks on the south side and in front of the multifamily building, which exceed the requirement of the development code. As such, there is pedestrian connectivity and pathway connection through the site from Arch Street to the multi-use pathway along Eustick. In addition, planning approval will be required for the proposed multifamily building, live-work units and townhomes in the future to ensure compliance with these development code standards. This slide shows the required findings for rezone. There is a technical error in the current zoning of that, in that it needs to be, that needs to be corrected in that the existing R1C zone cannot support the anticipated development that is encouraged and promoted along arterial roadways such as Eustick, where there's infrastructure such as bike route, bike route or bus, bus routes, bicycle routes to support higher density. In addition, the legacy code had zoned the north half of the parcel C one, which is very similar to the proposed MX one. The reason for the current zoning change, the current zone that changed the whole parcel to R1C was to avoid a split zone parcel. And the majority of the south portion of the property was zoned R1C, which is, so rezoning the whole site at the time of the modern zoning code is consistent with the logic of, of that, of that ordinance. In summary, there are, in summary, as seen here, the rezone complies with the required findings as discussed in the project report. The Planning and Zone Commission recommends approval of the rezone and the subdivision. Thank you.
Questions for David? All right. Come on up.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, Ben Semple, Rodney Evans and partners, fourteen fifty West Bannock Street, Boise, eight, three, seven, zero, two. Want to thank David for the presentation. I think he encapsulated what our request is. We are in agreement with the staff report and conditions of approval. I wanted to highlight a couple items of this application and development. As David stated, this is for a twenty-eight unit, total unit redevelopment of the site. It includes sixteen single-family townhomes that are somewhere in the twelve hundred to fifteen hundred square foot range. They all have garaged parking. We also have four live-work townhomes. They're probably in the twenty-five hundred to three thousand square foot range. Also include two-car garages. The reason that those are larger is they do have about a thousand square foot workspace on the first floor that fronts that multi-use pathway along Eustick. And then the eight multifamily unit building on the site that is primarily one and two bedroom units. There will be some amenities within the building as well as on the site. I also wanted to indicate that even though this is private streets, private alley, the sidewalks associated in the pathways will be publicly accessible so that users of that multi-use pathway along Eustick could go through this site to Arch Street, anticipate to the east and south, there'll probably be some redevelopment in the future just based on the parcel sizes here. And so that would facilitate pedestrian movement through there. Also, based on the ACHD feedback, we are widening Arch Street from Wildwood Street to the west, all the way to the east boundary of this property. Currently, Arch Street is fairly substandard. It is about twenty feet of asphalt with a rural road section. It actually deviates from the dedicated right-of-way along the frontage of this property. So this project will widen. dedicated right of way along the frontage of this property. So this project will widen that street to 24 feet minimum of asphalt. As well as provide three foot gravel shoulders on both sides. It will realign this road to pull it back into the public right of way. So that in the future, the south half can be at the, you know, curb gutter sidewalk can be added there as well as further to the east. We don't anticipate many issues with that widening. There's a couple of structures that get close to the right of way as you approach Wildwood to the west. Feel like we can work with A C H D and those property owners to make sure that this is, uh, that installation goes per plan. You know, we've talked, we had a neighborhood meeting, a lot of the concerns were density, traffic, parking. We feel like we've addressed all of that. We're fully parked on the project. We are providing some on street parking on Arch Street, which is a public right of way. And yeah, I would stand for any additional questions. We're really excited about the project.
Thank you. Questions for Ben?
Ben, do you have to do any improvements on Arch Street? Or does Arch Street pretty much stay the same that it is?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, in front, along the property frontage, we will be do curb gutter detached five foot wide sidewalk as it is a local roadway. We'll be tying that full half street section into the widened 24 foot wide full pavement rural section to the west and to the south. But we're effectively building about 28 feet of asphalt plus the curb gutter and detached sidewalk along the frontage of this property.
And then does it kind of just like stub at the east in case there's something that, because it looks like there's another lot that's next to it to the, to the east. Does it just sort of stub there for potential future development?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, that's correct. There's, I believe it's about 10 plus acres immediately to the east of here that is a single parcel. It is marginally used maybe for some light agriculture right now. There's an owner out there that kind of has a lot of property. We will stub that to his property boundary could be extended in the future. There are two residents on the south side of this property frontage. So we will be retying their driveways into the widened street and improved street as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anything further? All right. Is anybody here to testify on this? Would you like to say more?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Um, I will go ahead and close the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of C R twenty five dash six and S U B twenty five dash fourteen, a rezone of 1.35 acres from R one C to M X one. I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
Madam Mayor, um, I think this is a really great use of space. I appreciate the like infrastructure and access that will be added here. I think it aligns with our goals for, for land use near activity centers and and adjacent to the, to the similar zoning.
Further discussion?
Oh, Madam Mayor, I just appreciate this project being brought forward. It just looked like a good, not, it's taking a space of land that's going to be providing some fair amount of housing units that we desperately needed in the city. And I'm glad it's been brought forward. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. I'd just like to comment as well. I, I like this project a lot, varying types of housing and what I would consider kind of now nowadays starter homes in terms of that 1,200 square foot townhome. So this is been an exciting project in an area with some great amenities down the street from the park. Really exciting project for some, for folks that are going to move in there.
Right. Clerk?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Ben, I won't belabor anything else. Just welcome to West Boise, all of these families that'll be coming in here. We, we love having new folks and I really appreciate the mixed use. I think that's very important for us. Thank you.
All right, Clerk?
Hallie Burton?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Stead?
Yes.
Willetts?
Yes.
Corliss?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries?
All right, thank you. Um, on this next item, I'm going to hand the meeting over to the council president. The attorney for the applicant is a personal friend. And the attorney's land is part of this request, so I'm going to step aside.
David?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The applicant is requesting a rezone of approximately 2.2 acres from R two H D O, which are residential compact with historic designer overlay to R one C H D O, residential traditional with historic design overlay, and a rezone of approximately point 09 acres from R two, residential compact to R one C residential traditional for properties located at seven, 1705 through 1817 West Resiqu Street and 70, 703 and 704 North Eighteenth Street. The subject properties are located along Resiqu Street between 17th and 19th Street within an established residential neighborhood. And it can, and, and they contain nine existing single family homes. This block is situated at the edge of the expanded North End Historic District and just north of the Albertson's Market Shopping Place, which is comprised of a various, various mix of commercial uses. The area is located within both the downtown Regional Activity Center and the State Street 21st, 21st Street Neighborhood Activity Center. In addition, there's a level one bike way located within the neighborhood and adjacent to the site and bus route number nine best in class route runs along State Street with a bus stop, a bus stop approximately 800 feet to the south. Once again, the slide, the share should basically shows the required findings for a rezone. And as again, I will be showing this slide again at the end of the presentation. The subject property and the surrounding neighborhood are, are designated compact on the future land use map. The existing R two zone and proposed R one C zones are consistent within the compact land use designation. The commercial shopping center located about 130 feet to the south has a land use designation of mixed use. This commercial node consists of the Albertson's Stores located along State Street, basically as detailed within the project report and the applicant's explanation letter. The applicant requests to downzone the subject properties from R two to R one C in order to protect the neighborhood's character since it is located with, located at the edge of Historic District and close to the commercial properties along State Street. The planning team and the Planning and Zoning Commission do not support the rezone request and cannot find a technical error to justify the requested rezone to R one C. The subject properties have been zoned R one T, R one two, sorry, since the establishment of the development code. In general, and for the large, and for the larger R two area in general, that is north of State Street, this area was intended to create a transition zone between the commercial uses along State Street and the residential neighborhood to the north. This transition zone would allow development that is compatible with both the adjacent mixed use zones along state and the traditional residential neighborhoods to the north. In addition, allowing higher density development is anticipated and encouraged by the conference of plan within this larger R two area, since it is close to State Street where services and infrastructure are present to support higher density developments. However, it should be noted that the subject area and the nine existing homes on the site are protected from redevelopment by the underlying historic overlay. The development code requires additional transitional setbacks and design standards for projects adjacent to R one C zone for redevelopment on adjacent zoned R two, R three and mixed use zones. This slide shows the required neighborhood transition standards from the, from the development code and basically states that that is that the height of the building for any development or redevelopment adjacent to R one A, B and C will be limited to 35 feet. Any portion of the building over 35 feet in height will need be set back 20 feet. As such, it was intended that the zoning map and the city to create an area large enough to accommodate the mix of residential housing types that are anticipated along a major calve corridor. And that would comply with these standards. The rezone is not compatible with three of the existing single family houses along Resiqu Street, since it would create a nonconforming front yard setback for these houses. The existing R two zone allows for a 10 foot front yard setback currently. However, the requested R one C requires a 15 foot front yard setback. The houses located at 15, 1705, 1707, 1711, Resiqu maintain, currently maintain a 14 and 14 and a half foot front yard setback, which is less than the required 15 from, of the proposed R one C. As such, the requested rezone would make the front yard setbacks of these houses nonconforming. In summary, the proposed rezone does not comply with required findings. There is no technical error or change condition in the surrounding to support the rezone to R one C. The subject area has been zoned R, R two since the original adoption of the development code in 1966 as intended, and there has been no change in the area. It is, it is not in the best interest or the, of public convenience and welfare, and it is not compatible with the potential to redevelopment of the adjacent R two zone properties to the south of the site. Since it could impact the potential redevelopment of these adjacent R two zone properties and limit the potential residential density on the, in the area where infrastructure exists such as bike routes, bus routes and such that could support higher density along State Street. In addition, it would conflict with the goals and policy of the conference of plan. In conclusion, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend denial of the rezone. Thank you.
All right. Uh, next up, the applicant.
Thank you, Council President Nash and members of the City Council. My name is Diane Prince-Lon. My address is 1426 Post Office Box in McCall and up until August of this year for 26 years, I and my husband had the property at 1707 West Resiqu. I'm representing nine applicants in this unusual request to downzone our properties. We've done this voluntarily. We are sharing in the cost of, of the application and the engineering work. No one's being paid as part of this application request. So why are we making this unusual request? To protect our property rights, all of these properties owners have invested substantial amount of money over the years in preserving and in some cases restoring these historic homes. Just most recently, we have a young family at the corner of Eighteenth and Resiqu who tore off their vinyl siding and replaced it with the original wood lap siding to preserve the historic character. We also believe there was a historical error when the original zoning was adopted in 1966. And we would, these property owners would like to be in the same zone that reflects the kind of property that they are, which is historic, single family residences. We feel that this rezone would further the goals of the comprehensive plan. And these properties do not have the advantage, the advantage of the neighborhood transition zone because they're located in the R two zone. So historically, these properties were part of the Highland Park Edition, which extended from Harrison to 20th and from the south boundary of these properties to Eastman. This plat was recorded in 1906 and most of these houses were built between 1909 and 1912. So historically, they have been part of this neighborhood to the north. Since the original zoning, there's a location of those properties. So we were just, these properties were the south boundary of that subdivision. Since the, um, uh, plat was adopted, 55 years later, the city adopted the first zoning district map. And at that time, uh, Resiqu Street was used as the boundary between the R two and the R one C or R one in those days, effectively segregating this last south block from the rest of the historical neighborhood. So to, we feel this was a, this was an error. In talking to planners who were around back in 1966 or had familiarity with that period of time, there was a lot of disinvestment in the north end. And if you look, there's a lot of R two that was created at that time to stimulate redevelopment. We don't think that's the case anymore. And so there's been changed conditions in terms of the economic vitality of that neighborhood. This is just a, a photograph, an old photograph that shows how connected the neighborhood was as well as a photograph of the, of the south side along Resiqu. And so we, we see Resiqu as a unifier, not a divider. We very much have neighborhood parties and associations with people to the north. So we feel a part of that. In addition, it's a fairly very walkable neighborhood. There was, there's bike lane, as David mentioned, and people sit on their porches and interact with people along Resiqu. So it's, it's very much part of our neighborhood, not a boundary to it. We also think the second reason for the request for this rezone is a change in conditions. And that is that since the original zoning was adopted, the city has much, become much more aware of the importance of their historic structures and two overlay districts were created. These, these properties are the southern boundaries of both those districts, the National Harrison Boulevard District and the Near North End District. So those are changed conditions we think should be represented in the zoning district as well. Zoning is all about intention and it is a legal statement of intention of what the city attends these neighborhoods to be. And when you look at the purpose statement for the R two and the R one C, we feel we're very much a part of what is intended for the R one C and less so for the R two. The properties that are immediately to the south of us are a mix of older homes, duplexes, triplexes, converted structures and commercial buildings. They very much fit that R two definition. And they're a very comfortable transition. They have been for many years since the marketplace was developed and commercial developed along State Street, a very comfortable buffer between that, that, those commercial districts and the R one. And they also provide a lot of natural occurring affordable housing. So we feel this project is consistent with the land use map as David mentioned. We also feel that it's consistent with the city's vision that we be a community of staple neighborhoods as well as vibrant mixed activity centers. We don't necessarily think those two things are contrary to each other and they can live side by side. We're hoping that you will support us in this effort. We feel it furthers many of the goals and objectives for preserving and stabilizing neighborhoods in the city. Thank you. And I'll lend the mic to Deb Nelson.
Good evening, members of the council, Deborah Nelson. My address is 1811 West Resiqu, which is shown here. My house was built in 1910. My husband, Keith Donahue, and I are one of the nine applicant families, and I'm going to focus on the rezone criteria here. I'm going to also respond to the comments in the staff report. So for the first criteria, as Diane noted, we have both a technical error and changed circumstances where only one is required under your code. The map error was made at the first zoning code in 1966 when the zone boundary followed more of a standard block like shape rather than actually tracing the border of the unique Highland Park Edition plat that included 16 and a half blocks. Careful review would not have separated these larger lot 1910s era historic homes from their R one C counterparts across the street. And as Diane noted, we also have changed circumstances, both from the subsequent historic overlays that reinforced where that line should be based on the age and the architectural character of the homes. These boundaries included the south side of Resiqu. And the modern zoning code adoption in 23 also intensified the development that can occur within the R two zone and along the State Street corridor to our south. So these, these changed circumstances make it even more important to make sure that the boundary between the R two zone and the R one C zone is placed correctly to protect historic resources and ensure that the code transition standards that already exists between R two and R one C zones applies to protect these historic homes. Skip this. Staff has argued that they want to create a, a separation. This is, this is just showing that those transition standards, it's also in the staff report. But staff has argued that the R two is necessary to create separation to State Street and the mixed uses that are there. And they said that they, they intended to have a 200 foot R two transition area. This 200 foot distance is not referenced anywhere in the modern zoning code or blueprint Boise. And it's frankly impractical to suggest that such a uniform distance can work in all locations. You can see here that it doesn't work in many locations around us along Ellis and other places. It is more important to follow the historic layout of the neighborhood and uses than to arbitrarily extend a desired buffer zone over the tops of historic homes. And as discussed, even if there's no error, the rezone is also justified by changed circumstances. The proposed rezone to R one C is also The proposed rezone to R one C is also in the best interest of the public because it protects an existing stable neighborhood and those historic resources by providing transition standards to this row of historic homes. There is no new development that is proposed, so there is no change in the provision of services here. Staff argues the rezone would impact the ability of our street and the streets behind us to redevelopment to more dense housing. As to our street, yes, that is correct. We are trying to protect these historic homes that exist here. As to the R two zone properties between our homes and State Street, these properties can still redevelop into a range of housing types consistent with more intensive mixed-use zones. They will simply need to observe the very transition that we're asking for to protect historic homes. The city has already determined that it's appropriate to put that transition between the R two and R one C zones. We're just asking you to recognize that the character of these homes deserves that protection and should be included with the R one C. Third criteria is that the size, scale, height, density and mobility network of the applicant homes are consistent with the R one C. I think staff said it best in, on page six of the staff report that the similarities include being located in the same subdivision and within the expanded north end historic district. The existing houses on the subject property are also similar to the age, style and construction as the houses located within the adjacent R one C zone neighborhood to the north. These are all detached, single-family homes ranging from one to three stories on an average lot size of sixty-six hundred feet. All have ten-foot detached sidewalks in front of the Resgu Street bikeway. That is all consistent with R one C to the north. Staff argues this finding cannot be met because for three of the houses that were built between nineteen eleven and nineteen twelve in a similar style. Get to the right there. In a similar style with a covered front porch that covers approximately fifty percent of the front facade. The staff is arguing that these houses will become non-conforming with the requested rezone. The front facade of these homes is between fourteen and fourteen and a half feet from the back of the sidewalk and twenty-seven feet from the street. Your city code already contemplates front porch encroachments and allows them to extend five feet within front setbacks, which is sufficient for these homes to be well within and meet your fifteen-foot setback when the R one C. But staff is not interpreting this language to apply to the style of these three homes where a partial porch in the front house facade are flush. Regardless, it is hard to see how a six to twelve inch encroachment from the partial front facade of a historic home into a property line setback supports staff's recommended finding that the R one C zone in this location is incompatible with the surrounding development. The depth of these three houses matches the other houses built along the same block whose front porches are set back fourteen feet. Throughout the north end, which is primarily zoned R one C, you can find examples of homes, many examples, that are closer than fifteen feet from the back of sidewalk. As Diane touched on, our proposed rezone is also consistent with the comprehensive plan designation of compact. The comp plan calls for protection of stable neighborhoods and historic resources. The comprehensive plan also calls for transitions between housing densities. The staff has argued that, and they say on page eight of the staff report, that the proposed R one C zone is not consistent with the comp plan designation of compact. But the statement is inconsistent by a statement on page six of the staff report that both the R two and the proposed R one C zones are consistent with the compact land use designation. The statement from staff is also inconsistent with the comp plan itself, which supports a range of residential zoning, protection of historic structures and neighborhoods, and transitions between housing densities. The comments in the record are very favorable. We appreciate the support of our neighbors, of Nina. In particular, I wanted to highlight one comment from Sherry Fremuth. She's a past member of the city's preservation commission, a longtime member of Preservation Idaho, and a former senior program officer for the National Trust for Historic Preservation. And she says in her written letter to you, "I can say with authority that historic resources are vital to the well-being of a community. Modifying zoning provisions and increasing density can undermine the stability of a functioning, walkable neighborhood that exhibits prized elements of livable spaces, porches, walkways and tree canopies." We understand that the neighborhood to our south is going to redevelop. That is what's planned and, and appropriate for the State Street corridor. But there is a careful balance to be made between that redevelopment, which I support, and historic preservations. And because this is a closer area, those transition standards in your code are even more important. We like being next to the commercial. It's great to be able to walk to the grocery stores to nearby commercial. You're getting and you already have the kind of development that staff is looking for with detached sidewalks and walkability and access to commercial. There will be redevelopment that will be denser, but we would like for that development to be built in transition to our homes. And I'll wrap up there. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
That was good to see. So I'm, first of all, I've never seen an application like this before since I've been on council. And I'm trying to figure out, you know, you're talking about promoting this protection of stable neighborhoods. I'm trying to figure out what's unstable. So like, if you've got the nine, nine homeowners there who don't want anything to change, can't they just not change anything? Like, why is, explain to me what's at stake if this doesn't happen? Because I guess I'm having a hard time understanding what the threat is. Is it that one of the neighbors will eventually sell and then they'll redevelop into something that you don't necessarily want to see because our staff is saying that there's protection in place already? So I'm just trying to figure out what the threat is being imposed to you and your neighbors.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton. That's a great question. So it is a unique development or application before you because there isn't any proposed development right now, right? We're not coming forward with a development. But we are asking for land use to be compatible with the existing structures. The neighbors have put a lot of investment into these homes to keep them historic and really have, and treasure that.
Deb, I'm going to interrupt you right there. When you say land use to be consistent with the, the structures, do you mean land use of your properties or land use around your properties?
So both are true because we've got.
Why couldn't you just enter into CCNRs or do deed restrictions on the existing property? Like to protect the existing homes? Why couldn't you do a private agreement to protect those? It seems like this is just about transition standards around properties nearby.
And that's why I said both are true because it's not just what the zoning is on our property, it's the code protections that you give to where you put that boundary. And so it is partially for our properties. So to continue the answer on what would happen on our properties, these properties are currently contributing, but they may not always be, particularly if there is encroaching development that causes disinvestment. So it is possible under your historic protection code to have homes that are ultimately demolished and renovated consistent with denser development. And that's why staff has resisted this. They, they are saying that they want this street to be available for exactly that type of redevelopment. And our desire instead is to protect the few historic resources that you have and not enable that path of redevelopment on our street. It's also important to us to protect the transition behind us, really for the same reason, to be able to ensure that the, the, the continued investment in these homes and in this type of neighborhood that is, extends from the south boundary of our properties up to the north end, it is a unique character. We think that adds a lot to the city and we're part of that section of the city. Having the transition standards apply. I mean, you can see the difference here in, from your code is, is important. It, you have to match the setbacks of the R one C zone, so that'll create a larger setback. And you've got to step back the building height. So they can still redevelop, but they'll be redeveloping in a way that is more compatible with the adjacent homes.
So it seems then that the bigger concern is that you are concerned that there may be development on the properties to the south of you. And if you aren't rezoned, those properties won't have as large of a setback or as large of a step down.
That is certainly part of it, yes. And then the other part is what could happen on, within our zoned nine properties?
If one of you decided to sell and do something else, then somebody could do something that wasn't in character with the rest of the houses.
Yes.
Okay. Deb, have the property owners considered CCNRs? And if not, why not? That seems like the first place I would go before requesting that the city do it for you.
We certainly have to consider all options if the city is not supportive of this request. I think from our perspective, and you can see this in our, in the presentation that Diane made and the, her original application here, it does feel like there is a mistake here. There is, the line does not match the historic neighborhood that the plat or the historic designation. And so through volunteer efforts and funding, we are asking the city to apply your adopted standards here. That is the best protection for these homes because it does address the adjacent properties as well, which we can't restrict.
Can you go to a slide that shows the zoning classifications by parcel? The map. So could you walk me through an example and you'll have to remind me what properties are there? I assume it's the, I assume that's MX three along State Street in the red.
So if you look behind our, that's, yeah, that's MX three in the red, exactly. The R two is the tan color that we are hatched over and R one C is to the north.
And then could you walk me through a scenario of a type of development to the south of there that might offend the neighborhood? Where the neighborhood may not be entitled to the same type of rights that R one C is entitled to.
So the unique shape of these lots, you can see because of the way that this was plotted with the streets angling out to State Street has created lots of angles. And so many of these properties back up to multiple smaller lots. And that is ripe for redevelopment by combining those into larger buildings. We do not have alley protection behind most of our homes. There are some alleys that extend behind some of the lots, but even where the alley extends behind some of those lots, you've got, because of the angles, adjacent lots that do not, are not separated by an alley. My, my lot's one example of that where I have an alley behind me and three immediately adjacent small lots.
So Deb, here, the, are you looking for? Is the concern for development in MX three or R two as well?
MX three is, is out of our control and it, it, we're not addressing that.
I think my question is, you're looking for transition standards. Is there a concern about redevelopment that might offend the neighbors here in R two or MX three?
R two is the only thing that would be relevant here for the transition standards. Our rezone request would have no impact on the MX three zone.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
So just kind of looking at the map right here, and I'm really familiar with the area. I ride my bike around here all the time. So if we go just a little bit to the west and we're on Ellis Street, there's houses that I would say are actually really similar to yours. Lots of beautiful, older historic houses who are also zoned R two. And it kind of looks like if we're looking at the map that there's kind of like a block of everything below here is R two or MX and everything above is R one C. So is, I mean, wouldn't there be the same argument for the houses that were along Ellis to the south of Ellis as well? Aren't they kind of in the same situation that you are?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, so they are not part of the same nineteen oh six plat along Ellis, but a few of the houses to our immediate west were. And so there is a distinction there between some of the, the ones you pointed out.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, you know, when we say that there was an error when this was originally plotted, but then we look at all the houses to the west on Ellis that are, you know, are similar to yours. Not saying that they're better looking than yours, you have beautiful houses. But historic houses. And it looks to me, if I'm looking at this map, that there's kind of like a pretty clear line of where they said, okay, everything up here is R one C and everything out down here is different. So explain to me why, you know, your area specifically here is a mistake while the other ones aren't a mistake.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, we actually aren't saying that the other ones weren't also a mistake. We just are the volunteers who came forward collectively with our own homes.
Fair enough.
But they very well should be reevaluated. I think the city really should take a more careful line drawing exercise to look at protecting historic resources. You call for it in your comprehensive plan to do so. And I recognize as you do that housing is important in the city. But that includes all types. That includes protecting historic homes as well. And we don't believe that we are going to meaningfully impact your ability to gain additional density and housing. We're just going to get those protections that are built into your code already. Commissioner Moore said at the P and D hearing that she hoped that people would volunteer that anyway because of course that makes sense to give those transitions. I wish that people would volunteer that, but I don't expect that. So we'd like for it to, to have the benefits that are in your code and maybe other properties should ask as well.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, maybe just one more for now and then if other folks have questions or I'd love to hear from other folks too. So let's just say that one of these houses on the corner of eighteenth and Resgu decided in the future that they were going to demolish their house and build something larger. Is that something, you know, under your understanding of our land use code that we would allow them to do? Because I think that my understanding is that we wouldn't allow them to it because it's a contributing structure in the neighborhood. So would it have to be that it would eventually fall into disrepair and be non-contributing for that to happen? Or how would somebody actually go about doing that? Because I, I'm trying to understand how that would be possible.
Yes, there are nuances under your historic code where people can do, you know, pretty significant remodels, even within the shell. And so they could add that more intense intensity of use potentially within the historic shell. Also, if it became non-contributing, certainly it could be completely demolished. And it would not have any transition standards there either. Because again, it would still be within the R two zone and not be adjacent to R one C for the remaining homes on the street.
But somebody couldn't just like go and demo their house right now? We wouldn't allow them to do that.
No, I mean, you do have protections built into your historic code, but it's not just a, you could never do that.
Okay. Yep. Council, we're going to take a five-minute break. If you have questions for Deb, when we come back, that's just fine. We'll be back here at seven thirty-five. Lucy, get up here.
I'm just here if you had any more questions.
All right, we'll resume this public hearing. Any further questions for Deb?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Hi Deb, thanks so much for coming out here tonight and presenting this. I guess my question is I'm struggling with is the time factor. If this was an error back in nineteen sixty-six and we're in twenty twenty-five and we're fifty-nine years later, I guess to me, if we were in nineteen sixty-eight, I could maybe see justifying an error being taken place, but why wasn't this raised before now?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Corlist, I mean, part of that's in, because of the changed circumstances that we raised, right? Because of the change, the adoption of the modern zoning code in twenty twenty-three, the city intensified the development that can occur immediately adjacent to our properties. And so now those transition standards are even more important. And during that process too, when you guys adopted the modern zoning code, you talked about how you were going to have to make changes further on, that you were adopting the zones as they were. You didn't reevaluate these kinds of lines. And just because the mistake was made initially by not tracing the details of where the actual historic plat was and the historic homes were, doesn't justify it. And in fact, when the historic overlays came in, they did go through that careful exercise and put it exactly where we're asking for under these homes. So that's, that mistake has just carried forward, that error has carried forward.
Mr. Mayor, Deb, I think if we looked at subdivisions around the valley, you, there's a lot of different plats we could roll back to and say was a mistake. there's a lot of different plats we could roll back to and say was a mistake. And I think if we're going to, and then where, where do we draw that line? Is it only those from sixty-six years ago, the ones we can find the plat? It creates an argument that I think causes me a lot of consternation. I've seen a lot of-
You have a question, Councilmember?
Yes, thank you, sorry. So Deb, I, I guess I'm sure-
Where do we draw the line?
Where do we draw the line? This has been sixty-six years and we can see with R two next to it. I guess you don't feel that the, do you not feel that the historic overlay, those protections that are already afforded for these houses are not enough?
Unfortunately, your code does not include transition standards next to a historic overlay. That would be ideal.
What makes the historic overlay transitions more important than say ones up on the bench?
I, I can't address what's on the bench and what would be there. I just know that you have determined, and so this would apply throughout the entire city, on the bench or anywhere. You have determined that between the R two and R one zones, there should be transition. It's just a matter of compatibility, where you've determined matched setbacks and stepped back height, irrespective of historic. When you look at the homes here, and this is why we point to the plat, but the plat isn't critical. You can just look at changed circumstances, but we point to the plat really because it's evidence of why these homes are part of the North End historic character. They, they were, they were platted in 1906, they were built in the 1910s. They have the same design aesthetic, lot sizes, everything that's consistent with the properties to the north. They are appropriately part of that transition standard that you determine should go between R two and R one C. They also deserve extra protection because they're historic and your comp plan calls for protection and your code for protection of historic resources. So those, all of those things are why we're asking to put the line in the correct place on the exterior of these homes that match the size and the age and the architectural characteristics, as well as being historic.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Deb.
Mr. Mayor. Hi Deb, so I want to try to drill down more into the protection. You keep talking about protecting these properties. So can you talk about, and you talked about the concern of bordering properties, redeveloping, being ripe for redevelopment? What are, in your like worst case fear, what's, what's your nightmare scenario? Of those properties redeveloping and being rezoned as what? What is kind of your, your big, your worst fear, worst case scenario that you could imagine those bordering properties becoming?
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Morello, it's, it's not even a rezone. I mean, of course, somebody could come to you with a rezone for any particular development request, and that would be something that we'd have to address if we wanted to as neighbors, as individual applicants. It's the existing zone. So R two, as it is, right next to us, can already build up to forty-five feet in height. They do not have any transition standards. They don't have to set that back. So the worst case scenario already exists with those R two. And so they don't have an increased setback and they've got the height-
Excuse me, I don't need a madam mayor. Madam Mayor, myself, Deb, it doesn't, doesn't R one, doesn't that have a forty-five?
And excuse me, I'm trying to remember, David, would you correct me? Is it forty or forty-five feet before? Sorry to interrupt.
The max height in the R two is forty-five and it's forty and they are-
Okay, thank you. And our homes are less than thirty-five.
So it's of, are we talking about a five foot difference? There's got to be more here. Is, is that what we're talking about?
There's a five foot difference in the zone, but of course our houses are not built to forty feet. Because they are old and historic.
So could a forty-foot, could a forty-foot house build across the street from you? Like that's possible, but if you're concerned about a forty-five foot house behind you?
It's not likely to be a single family home. It would be more of a dense boxier structure is more likely for the redevelopment that's anticipated in the R two and called for here. It's more likely to have these lots that are combined into larger structures. And so-
By larger, do you mean, you don't mean taller?
Well, up to the height and taking up more of the lot with not as big of a setbacks. And so yes, they would be closer and larger behind us. So it, obviously we don't have that right now. So Councilmember Morello is getting, you know, back to your question, but the, the concern is that the, that you haven't built in any protections to these homes that are contemplated for these types of homes.
Mr. Mayor, just a follow-up. So then going back to protection. So we're talking about worst case scenario, four stories, forty-five feet behind you, forty feet, three stories in front of you. What does that, in the massing potentially, if there's land assembly in a bigger multifamily project?
Right.
What does that four-story multifamily project do to these historic homes? What is the pain that isn't, that is caused by that? Can you go into that a little bit more?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Morello, yeah, it's a fair question. I mean, obviously residential use, next to residential use, I would say is a compatible use. So we're really talking about building design and, and compatibility. I mean, that's why I brought up Commissioner Moore's statement. Because, you know, as an architect, because she recognized that that compatibility is appropriate. Your code recognizes that that compatibility is appropriate. So I might ask you, why does your city code include a transition standard between R two and R one C? What's the harm? Well, you're trying to make sure you have compatible structures. That's, that's why the code has that, and that's what we're seeking is compatibility. And it's, it's visual, it's light, it's imposing, it's, you know, those, those are the kinds of things that are the harm. It's, it's truly seeking the compatibility protections that are built into your code.
Councilmember Will-
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Deb, thank you so much. I need to check my understanding on a few things. So prior to the passing of the modern zoning code, what was, what was this area zoned as? The, this current street that wants to be rezoned?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Willis, it's the same. The zoning has not, did not change with the modern zoning code. The, the language in your code about what you can do within certain zones changed.
And then, follow up, Mr. Mayor. This seems to be something that's coming up a lot as we are exercising and, and implementing the modern zoning code. I'm curious. When the modern zoning code was going through, there was lots of opportunities to look at things like this. I'm curious what made this more urgent now than a couple of years ago? When there was an opportunity to say, hey, actually we think we should be rezoned as part of the modern zoning code.
Um, Councilmember, or Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Willis, I, I can only speak for myself that I moved to the neighborhood after that time. But there are other neighbors who can talk about their, their interests.
I have a question for Josh. Be out of sec. Josh, at the top of your head, could you remember any maybe applications in recent history where we had a developer voluntarily amend their design standards? Or we asked them to amend their design standards to provide some type of buffer that may not have been required by law? Like are there examples of that in your recent memory when those types of things have happened?
Mr. Mayor, off the top of my head, no. I can't say definitively that that hasn't happened, but I can't think of an example.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I make one quick comment about that?
I'm sure.
As Councilmember Morello was asking a minute ago about what could, could happen if there was a rezone? If there was a rezone, then you would have an opportunity to ask for that. Our concern is that right now, as is, that concern exists without any opportunity to get that kind of agreement.
Okay. All right. I think we'll go into public testimony. Let's see who we got. That's earlier. Oh, here we go. Eric. Yep.
Neighborhood Association.
Yep, welcome back first.
Madam, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Whatever.
And Councilmembers. Eric Hagan, North End Neighborhood Association. I have a little bit of a close proximity to this, having my house be not even a block away from this rezone. And when we moved in, in 2019, I did have a concern about the possibility of higher density and higher buildings being built in what is currently the shopping center where you have Jean-Joux and Cloud Nine. That being said, I didn't think much of it because it was, it was a pedestrian commercial zone back then, and it was limited to about a thirty-five or to fifty-foot height limit back there. Now, the new zoning code came into effect and provided some more opportunities here. And one of the items is the MX three zone that's directly to the south where the shopping center is. It was rezoned from pedestrian commercial to MX three. MX three allows for a seventy-foot height. This provides an opportunity for a much taller building to be basically budding up right into the historic character of the North End and the R one C zones. And this R two buffer is very small compared to the rest of the buffer that you see from State Street up into the North End. In most cases, it's blocks deep. And in many cases, it's separated by streets or alleys. And what these applicants are asking for is to address something that's immediately adjacent to them. Now, they came to us, the board, several months ago, and we had many of the same questions you guys had tonight. And, and they came and presented to the board, and the boards discussed this multiple times, including at our last meeting just a few weeks ago. And the board had no objections to it. And aside from just blindly saying, great, go ahead. It was a kind of unanimous, we support this because it's something that will protect the neighborhood and it will not have negative impacts on the rest of the neighborhood. So with all that in mind, Nina is in full support of this rezone request.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Eric, hi, thanks for coming out tonight. Being so what you're saying, I'm interpreting that as you're, you think actually the buffer between the MX and the R one C should be, like that the R two should actually be more space, is that right? So like it should go more north than Resigew?
No, no. Because of the setback requirements from the R two to R one, or any commercial districts to R one, that provides the setbacks that would be required. The lots to the south are pretty small, so I can't imagine them being that much larger. But it's the fact that the shopping center pushes into the North End. What the MX three is basically one lot deep up and down State Street. And at that point, it's a couple of blocks deep. So it's pushing in a lot more and reducing the buffer. And in many cases, the buffer goes from MX three to R three, to R two, to R one. So stepping down seventy, fifty, forty-five, forty. And in this case, the, the zone there, the R two is the only one that would allow it to step down from seventy to forty-five and then across the street. Whereas if we could limit that at Resigew, on the south side of Resigew, that would prevent the higher, higher heights of the buildings.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Corlis.
Yeah, thanks so much for coming out here tonight. Quick question on, I'm not as familiar with Nina's board. How many people sit on the board?
We have a full board, eleven people.
Eleven people? And then when, when you took this matter up with the board, did you also get input from people outside of the board, but within the Neighborhood Association?
It was discussed at two board meetings. And so the general public is welcome to those board meetings. I don't remember exactly how many people were there, but there was twenty, twenty to thirty people in attendance at those meetings.
Okay, and all the attendees, they were in support of this as well?
They didn't have any comments against it.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't speak for what their actual opinions were.
Okay, I didn't know if you took a vote maybe at those meetings and asked?
No, no, it was a discussion amongst the board. The, the public was free to participate and then did.
Okay, I see. Mr. Mayor, another follow-up question. What I'm hearing is a lot about the setbacks within our zoning code. And that, do you see that this is a concern not just in this neighborhood and this looking to zone? Or do you believe there's concerns in general about the setbacks within the zoning code?
I, I appreciate the fact that the new zoning code does provide the setbacks up against residential, but it is a concern where it wasn't so much before. I'm not, I'm not fully versed in the legacy code or the current code, though I do practice it on a daily basis, so.
I understand. Yeah, I think what I'm hearing is a lot of concern, especially with these taller heights and, and not having enough setback from where it is from a, a commercial MX one, MX three to these residential properties.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Eric, thank you for being here. Want to ask you about some comments that were made in the planning and zoning meeting about how, you know, currently, you know, there's concern about four-story, three or four-story, forty-five-foot development between this and the MX three, which would be seventy feet. And so I guess, aren't you getting just a much better view of what could be seventy-feet development? If you're reducing, getting that lower transition between the application that's before us and that MX three development?
Not quite following the question.
So if I'm looking at this right now, potentially someone could buy those properties south of this proposed rezone, put up a forty-five-foot building, three or four stories. And then in the future, that MX three on the other side of that could be seventy feet, right? And so there's, there is some stepping down. And so if the fear is not to have that forty-five-foot development south of this application, there's no stepping down. You would just be looking at the seventy-foot MX three development, right? I mean, can you talk me through how that's better?
Yeah, ideally, if, if we could go back, I would prefer not to have the MX three zone there, or at least have it, have had that stepped back through the commercial property there. But you're, you're right, that would, as it is, R two can go up to forty-five feet, four stories, and that would create the buffer to the MX three seventy-foot. Let's say, you know, just like the, you know, it could be a seven, seven-story apartment building right up against Washington or right up against Franklin there.
Yeah, thank you. Have, have you ever been to Philadelphia? Random.
Yeah.
No question. Have you been to Alfred's Alley?
Councilmember.
I've, I've got it, this is, this relates, this relates.
No.
Okay. You know, it's, Alfred's Alley is the nation's oldest continuous neighborhood with people, with normal people living in it. And it's got a seven-story development immediately next to it. Well, so, so my question is, you know, if you've got historic structures that you want to protect, are they, I mean, could you see how someone might view that forty-five-foot development as a bit of a protection from a seventy-foot development just on the other side of that property? Could you see that potentially, I mean, the gray area?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Easy question.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I always forget to say that whenever I talk to you guys, I apologize.
All right, signed up. We'll, we'll get through everybody who wants to testify here, but I'll just go through the signup sheet first. Gene Riddy. You'll have three minutes to testify, and if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Gene Riddy. My wife and I live at seventeen thirteen West Resigew Street, and we've been there for over forty-seven years. We are one of the applicants before you tonight. Our house was built in nineteen oh nine, and after we first moved into it, we started to restore it. Fourteen years of sweat equity and thousands of dollars later, you, the city, gave us an award for excellence in historic preservation. The adage is the apple doesn't fall far from the tree. Our son bought another one of the applicants before you at seven oh three North Eighteenth Street, and he spent hundreds of- and he spent hundreds of thousands of dollars restoring it. Couldn't be here tonight. He's out of town on, on business. But we believe transitioning to R one C, like our neighbors across the street and to the north of us, would help protect our substantial investment, but without detracting from possible future multi-unit projects to the south of us. In considering our request, we would invite your attention to the overwhelming neighborhood support for this application. There are over forty-five messages to you expressing strong support. Equally important, there is not a single objection in the record to our application, except for the staff's concerns. And I've read the staff's report. I understand that they're raising issues with you tonight. I, I hope consideration of our application doesn't come down to six inches versus eight inches versus twelve inches. We don't think we're asking for too much. The people south of us still will have the opportunity to develop if they want to. We believe you have the discretion to consider the staff's points, but in the end, favorably consider our application. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any awareness of how many of the folks south of you also have the historic overlay or are conforming houses?
I think we have a map that shows the overlay.
Of the people who express support?
No, the, the folks who are actually designated as historic or as contributing houses. Do you know if any of the ones south of you are contributing, just like you're contributing?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, right, thank you.
Any other questions I could answer?
All righty.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gene. All right, Jane.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jane Hockberg. I'm here with my husband Tyrone Horn. We live at one seven one five West Resgu Street. It's one of the houses that's part of this application. Our house was built in nineteen twelve. It's on the National Register of Historic Places. It's designated as a gold medallion home and received a total electric award sometime in the fifties. In that cottage living photo that was up on the screen earlier, it's actually one of the houses at the very end of that picture. So we're very proud that it was representative of Boise on a national scale like that. I purchased the house in two thousand and one. Ty moved in in two thousand and three. It's a very small house. I think it's the smallest of these application houses. It's two bedrooms. It's one story with a partial basement. It's a very small lot. On the east side, we have less than thirteen feet to the fence. The west side, we have less than ten. And from the closest point of the back of the house to our south border, it's less than thirty-two feet. We do not have an alley. During the planning and zoning commissioners deliberations, they discussed that an alley is the natural buffer between any development to the south. I wanted to point that out, that not every house here has an alley. The one on our block ends at Mr. Riddy's house. So any development of expanded commercial use or residential use to the south of us is only thirty-two feet from us. That's, you know, probably about the same from here to that pretty bird picture. Ty and I have done an absolute ton to fix up this house from major renovations to the foundation to smaller things like window sashes and pretty much everything in between. There's just a ton of sweat equity and a ton of money that we poured into this house, so we're here to protect that investment of time and energy. During the foundation repairs, we actually found an archaeological deposit of opium tins and ceramics and other things dating back to nineteen oh nine. And I bring this up just to point out that our neighborhood has this historic value that I think is really important. And when we talk about the best interest of the community, I, I think that should be part of the deliberations, is its historical value of what's in the house, what's under the house and land itself. All of the exterior changes and repairs that we've done have been consistent with the historical nature of the house and the neighborhood. So we're part of this rezon effort to preserve not only our house, but the whole street and to keep it as a traditional residential street, just like our neighbors right to the north of us on Resgu. We're really asking to restrict our own options in an effort to preserve these historical homes. And I would hope that the city would support that effort. To me, rezoning is, would be an incentive to keep and maintain our houses in the condition they're in, knowing that there could be massive development thirty-two feet from me is a little bit of a disincentive to maintain it. I just want to reiterate that our house, all of the applicants' homes are a symbol of the North End and have been on the national scale, and we'd like to preserve that for future residents. Thank you.
Jane, are you aware of any material financial impact that has been demonstrated in the record that might negatively affect the house on these streets? Or are we talking about sentimental value here? Because I, I can't imagine, I mean, these look like lovely homes. I can't imagine, I, I just have difficulty imagining, yeah, are, are we talking about sentimental value? Or is there a financial, like a material financial detriment to these homes that has been demonstrated either by you or one of the other applicants that you're aware of?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I can only speak on behalf of myself for this. For me, if there was a four-story building thirty-two feet, approximately thirty-two feet away from me, it would be extremely detrimental to my home and what I would value it as, not just sentimental, but I would have zero privacy in my bedroom, zero privacy in the backyard. And to me, I would think it would lose a lot of value. So for me, I, I'm looking out for its financial interest in that sense, too.
All right, I don't have anybody else signed up to testify. If you'd like to testify, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record. We have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, council, I'm Frank Lee. My address is seventeen eight oh one North Seventeenth Street, which is seventeenth and Resgu, immediately north of the properties. In fact, I'm immediately north of the three houses with the fourteen-foot setback from the sidewalk, and I am often found on my front porch with a similar fourteen-foot setback, drinking coffee every morning, talking to the neighbors. And the staff characterized that as an incompatibility with the neighborhood. I think that's one of the best features of the neighborhood, is that we all have great sidewalk porch connections, and I wish we had more of them. And what what this is really about is giving the neighbors the same protections that I have in my house across the street. And really, this is about where the city's desired, already in the code, transition point is between R one C and R two. In my house across the street, I get the benefit of it because I'm on the other side of the zoning. Houses just like mine in every way don't get the benefit of it because they're on the south side of Resgu. And so where do you put the transition? A line always has to be drawn somewhere. And when the mappers of the historic district drew the line, they drew it mid-block where the applicants want it, which is where the neighbors think of it. When you're going down Resgu Street on foot, on bike, on, it's a bike, it's a bike lane, it's your designated city bike zone or street. When you go on bike, go on foot, go on a car, on Resgu, you're in a historic neighborhood and you know it. One block to the south, you're in a transition zone, and you know it. And so, you know, there'll be, eventually, there'll probably be a forty-five-foot structure south of these homes and transition to something bigger down in the MX three. But where is the transition going to be? Is the city's designated transition between R one C and R two going to be protecting these houses or not? And I think this is where the line ought to be drawn, to respect the historic neighborhood, to, to respect where the people who understand the neighborhood and understand historic neighborhoods, where they drew the line. And I think it's wonderful that these neighbors are doing this to protect this neighborhood and the historic houses. I love it. And I'll stand for any questions you may have.
All righty.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Sure.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Benjamin Davenport. I reside at seventeen oh five Resgu. I am one of the quote-unquote non-conforming properties. And we also don't have an alleyway behind our house. I had a lot of great fluffy talking points that I was going to read to you about how wonderful the neighborhood is and why we moved there and how many hundreds of thousands of dollars I've invested in this property. But as I listen to the line of questioning, it occurs to me that what matters is what we feel is immediate, is what could be an immediate threat. Directly behind my house, where there is no alley, so thirty-two feet from my home, a forty-five-foot structure could be built. In fact, the people that just sold the duplex right behind me marketed it as a potential to build your very own Travis luxury condominium apartment. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the Travis. I think some of you from the North End probably are, and many of you probably sat on the city council when that was hotly debated. The last thing that I want for my three fifth-generation Idahoan kids is for them not to see the sunshine when a forty-five-foot building is placed behind my home. So we are here to ask for the same protections that others in our neighborhood in the fabric of a neighborhood that was stitched together in nineteen ten, not nineteen fifty-five, not nineteen sixty-six, but in nineteen ten. We would like that neighborhood to still exist, and it exists to us when we walk the streets and we see our neighbors on their porches. That's the things that we, that drew us all to that neighborhood. That's what we love about our neighborhood, and that's what we love about our neighbors. When we start building luxury condominium apartments that are four stories high and occupy an entire plot or more, suddenly we lose all of those things. I am concerned that we have heard from forty-five of your constituents and then however many people here as applicants, and zero people are opposed to this, and yet I hear from all of you, where should we draw the line? We're asking that you draw the line where they drew it in nineteen ten and where the Historic Preservation Committee did subsequently in years past. So I appreciate the discussion. I don't want a mini Travis behind my house. So with that, I'm happy to stand for questions. I invite all of you to come down next week at Halloween when there's seven hundred thousand of our best friends in the neighborhood, too.
All right, thank you for your testimony. Anybody else would like to testify? Come on up.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Mary Salt. I am one of the applicants. I am also one of the residences that has less than a fifteen-foot setback, which I cannot correct and I cannot fix. I cannot physically move my house. I purchased the home in April twenty twenty-four, so I'm probably the newest to the neighborhood. And as you can see here, we have a very warm and welcoming group of neighbors who are very intelligent and use our personal time and investments to foster what we've created. Like Jane, I also have a concern, would like to go on record, the use of the word fear. I don't have fear. My concern is the devaluation of my home value with development that does not have, I'd say, more stricter rigor in how it can be regulated. And my neighbors here have already spoken to all the data points as far as the setbacks and the concerns as far as height. I leave the expertise to them. I'm here as a Boise resident, someone who was intentional in purchasing their nineteen oh nine-built home, and just ask that I be considered as a Boisian and also knowing that I can't go back and erase time. But I'm here to make the present the best for all vested parties and family members and persons here. With that statement, I welcome any questions you may have.
All righty, thank you. Anybody else in the audience would like to testify? Anybody online? All ready? We'll hear from the applicant. Like to give some closing remarks?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll address some of the questions and comments that came up there. First of all, just a quick correction maybe on the setback. The, the rear setback in the R two is, is fifteen interior side, and because of the angles, many of these lots, it would be side-oriented, so it could be down to five or ten. So it'll be, these structures will be closer than thirty-two feet that was mentioned. Councilmember Hallie Burton, you asked about the historic district homes to our south. There are not any that boundary is on our south boundary, so they are not there. And Councilmember Morales, you asked about, you know, wouldn't the R two provide transition for us with the building heights? And, and the answer is yes, it does, and that forty-five feet continues to be there. So that the transition standards that are built into your code between the R two and R one C don't actually cap the height. All it does is create a step back in the height to create that daylight compatibility visual appearance. And so the height still would be there, so you'd still get that same protection and the appropriate buildup as is contemplated in your zoning code. And, and Councilmember Sted, you, you asked Eric, and he talked about the thinness of the R two zone here. It is thinner. I mean, it, there are different areas in your, in your code where it's, it's thinner or it's thicker because of the way the development has happened or the zoning code happened. The angles of the street here, the way State Street is angled away, you know, create some odd dimensions here. And I think that's where, you know, we disagree with staff's take on that of they're like, okay, well, we need to put the line two hundred feet in, irregardless of the types of homes and, and neighborhood that's there. And, and so I guess, you know, our, our ask of you is to actually look at the character of the neighborhood and put the line where it should be based on the built environment, which in this case does include a historic environment, and not arbitrarily seek to have a wider R two buffer there. I think because it's narrower, that's all the more reason why the building transition standards are really important about how that is built. And so that's really all we're asking for. And it, it, it really goes to, I think, the heart of this is, you know, staff's outlined a vision of this whole area should be available for redevelopment, our street and the streets behind us. But it's counter to what the city's vision is in your comp plan of protecting stable neighborhoods. You couldn't ask for a more stable neighborhood. That's exactly what Frank Lee was just describing. And that's what the, you're hearing from the neighbors. You have a stable neighborhood. So why not protect it with the transition standards that are built into your code for exactly around this type of neighborhood? It is not going to impact the overall vision for adding density and housing to also protect stable neighborhoods and to protect historic resources, and that's what we're asking for here. So thank you for considering it.
Mr. Mayor. So a couple of questions for you. One, I just want to start off with, you've been with a lot of meetings with us, lots of different groups of people. And oftentimes, we do have a lot of folks who come in, and maybe everybody is opposed to an application. And sometimes we approve it, and sometimes we approve it because that's what our code, that's where a comprehensive plan, that's what the developers' rights have the ability to do. So we follow the code, and even though people don't want it to happen, we're following the code and making a decision that's sometimes unpopular, but it's also what's written in law and code. So what I could use some help from you with is if you could just outline why you think that this should be rezoned, not based off of you, because that's not something we really factor in, but the code-based requirements for a rezon and how it fits those code-based requirements for rezon. I'm not saying that I disagree with the other statements that have been made, but if we're sticking the code like we're supposed to do, like make those arguments for me.
I'm happy to. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton. At the, at the heart of these criteria, the council has discretion. Right? You, you get to decide when to rezon. The criteria I walked through in my presentation, and I'll just recap it.
Please do.
And, and please ask me any questions if you want me to go deeper. There's four criteria. The first one, we either show that the map was The first one, we either show that the map was made an error or there's been a change in circumstances. We've we've pointed out the documents that we believe support the error, suggesting that the line didn't match what the historic record was at the time that 1966 code was adopted. And it's just been carried forward without correction, even when the historic district found a different line. The circumstances have also changed. The historic district came in and told us, okay, that that zone line doesn't appear to match where we believe the historic homes are. That's a changed circumstance. We also have an intensification of the uses that are now allowed to our south. The second criteria is that it's in the the rezone is in the proposed best, the best interest of the the public. And without impact, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact language in front of me, so I'm sorry for paraphrasing, but without impact on the provision of services. And so we believe it's in the best interest of the public because you're protecting an existing stable neighborhood and historic resources. And there's no change in the provision of services by changing this, these nine homes from R2 to R1C. The services remain the same for these homes. The rezone does not impact that. They're already in the area. They will always be in the area of this of this infill. The third criteria is that the size, scale, height, density, mobility network of the proposed zone is compatible with the surrounding development. R1C is compatible with R1C across the street. We have similar lot sizes. We have similar home sizes. We have similar home architecture. The era of the home is the same. They're all part of the same historic plat. So they're all built within the same era. We have the same detached sidewalks and the extra wide canopy, street canopy. We're all part of the same bikeway. So we actually match and Frank touched on this. We match the houses and the size and style of those houses and we don't match the houses behind us. It's great. I love that diversity. That's not a bad thing. It's just that that if you're going to draw the line where you guys have decided to separate R2 and R1C with compatibility standards, the line is in the wrong place to protect those those houses. And and we are compatible with R1C. So the third criteria, I mean, I quoted you, I quoted from the staff report where they talk about the similarities and the same size, height, density, mobility network. And then the fourth criteria is that we are compatible with a comprehensive plan. This area is designated compact residential. Your code has called for and your comp plan has called for the the zones that are consistent with that, and that includes R2 and R1C. And staff recognizes that in their staff report. So we are compatible with the designated the land use designation in your comprehensive plan. We also meet the goals of your comprehensive plan to protect stable neighborhoods, protect historic resources and a number of other goals. So it's a quick run through, but those are the four criteria and that's why we believe they're all met here.
All right. And then so the second question here is if this doesn't get rezoned the way that you want it to, how does it make the neighbor her neighborhood unstable?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, I think that's what the neighbors are trying to communicate to you about, you know, their their investment in the neighborhood and their concern that that investment is compromised. It's the same reason that the city code has apparently thought it wise to create those step backs between houses that are in the R2 zone and in the in the R1C zone. We're asking for those same protections because we believe those compatibility measures that the city has recognized create value in our homes. They protect the investments that have been made in those historic homes. And so that's the concern.
Okay, thank you.
Deb, just going through these, I mean, some of these findings that we'd have to make, I mean, I think some of them are arguable. Some of them are more specific and the one I'm kind of hung up on, which I feel like councils, questions of probably getting at, I think it's very clear that the applicants feel this would be in the best interests of their private interests. And what I keep getting hung up on is Roman numeral two, the proposed amendment is in the best interest of the public convenience and general welfare. We've been talking about a lot of things about like the character of the neighborhood in the North End. I'm guessing, I guess my question is, how does this? How does this serve the public interest of those that aren't living on the street? Maybe even those that are living south of there, maybe those that would would develop it, maybe those that are interested in housing. How is this serving public interests that aren't specific to the neighbors on the street? Question mark.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, because you guys have decided to protect existing stable neighborhoods and historic resources, because you have decided as a city that that is in the public interest. And so it it feels as though it's 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 not, it's not just about private interests versus other people's interests. It feels as though these are the sacrificial lambs for the desire to allow redevelopment without concern. I mean, just set aside our nine homes, just any nine historic homes. Why shouldn't the city be working on its own without the volunteer application from residents to protect those historic homes? Why shouldn't you be drawing the lines to do that? It it is in the city's interest to preserve and protect these neighborhoods. You don't have every, every place in the city isn't developed in such a cohesive neighborhood. You're trying to build those. You're trying to develop those in many places, right? I mean, that's a lot of greenfield development is trying to achieve exactly what has already been done here. I think that's what the city is getting at when you're saying protect stable neighborhoods. If you already have that accomplished here, you should do everything in your power to protect it. And you've already adopted exactly the transition standards that are appropriate here. You just don't have the line in the right place by half a block.
Okay. Council, any further questions for the applicant? I got a minute 35.
I don't have anything further. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions for staff?
Yep, yep. Can we pull up the map that shows the historic overlay? So it's kind of a funny looking map. When we see the lines, it kind of juts over to some areas. I'm guessing that when we did the historic overlay, it's because there wasn't enough contributing houses on the other side, or is there a different reason that the map kind of goes all over the place in this area?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe that's sort of the the reason why the the historic overlay stops at this location.
Because like if I'm looking around in that neighborhood, you know, I've been in there hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of times, there's other historic houses on the other side that seem like they would be contributing if the map went over. So I'm just trying to figure out why the map stopped there instead of continuing to go and fill in some of these other gaps or go a little bit further down.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Dave's correct. So when the surveys for a new historic district are completed, it's really a density and evaluation of how many contributing structures are within any given area. And you do end up with this very kind of convoluted cutout in the district here, but that was due to a lack of historic structures that were contributing in that area. So it does kind of meander and vary based on the on the ground conditions when the survey was done.
So potentially, even though that like this house is sort of mid-block, the road's going around the outside, the house is on the south side of here, not even really separated by an alley. Maybe you're just, there's not enough contributing houses in there for them to have gotten the the loop around.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that's correct. There could be not enough historic structures on that south side. And when district boundaries are drawn, it is preferable to capture both sides of the street so that you do create that complete. You know, there's been some testimony tonight about the feel of Resgu that is created by both sides of the street being encapsulated by the historic district. So general practice is to include both sides of the street.
And then a question, can you bring up the zoning map? Is that handy? So we've got a group of neighbors that are cooperating together, love the, love their neighbors, really solid neighborhood right here, and they've banded together to do this. Now we've got a whole bunch of other houses that are over on Ellis Street who are sort of on this kind of what looks like actually a relatively natural line of where R1C would be and when R, R2 would be on the other side. So they've grouped together to try to do this all at one time. What prevents, I I shouldn't say what prevents. So every neighbor, could they do this individually if they wanted to? Like if we were along Ellis Street and each of these houses, if they didn't want development to happen behind them, could they each be requesting one by one by one to rezone?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, in theory, every, every property owner has the right to apply for an application to rezone. So and yes, it would make more sense to come in as a collective group if you're going to do it such as this, but you are correct. People do have that correct, do have that right to apply.
Okay. And so let's say that, um, let's say that the rezone is granted tonight and they get the R1C and then one of the lots behind them, they want to build. They each, it would have a 15 foot setback either way, right?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that is correct. The the rear setback, I believe in the R2 and the R1C zone is 15 foot standard.
And so if and in the R2 zone, they could go up to, I think it's 45 feet, four stories. And if it was R1C, they could go 40 feet, three stories. Am I getting that right?
If so the transition, so if it's the height of limit on the R2 is 45, the height limit in the R1C is 40, with the transitional setbacks, they could go if you're if the R2 to the south and this was approved, then they can go up to 35, then that that building have to go back in 20 more feet and then they can continue up to 45.
You you answered the question that I was trying to ask, but did really poorly. So really the difference that we're seeing here is if this was approved tonight and somebody built behind them, it would still be a 15 foot setback. It would go up to 35. It would step over and then it would continue to go back up.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that is correct.
And if it didn't get approved tonight, then somebody could build that same structure, but instead of it 35 feet jetting over, it could go up 10 more straight feet.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that is correct.
Is there anything else that would change besides that step up if we rezoned this tonight? That would prevent future development from going on behind them other than just that one step up?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe the primary sort of a standard that would apply here is the transition. I don't, I don't think anything else offhand would would change if the zone was changed.
Right. I'm going to ask that one more time just to make sure that I'm clear. So if they got the rezone tonight, then somebody could still develop behind them, but it would require a step back at 35 feet. And then it could go up the extra 10 feet.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yeah, that would be the transitional setback. They could do that. I mean, it would be an application they would have to apply for, but that's what would be allowed under the transition.
And if it doesn't get rezoned, almost the exact same structure, almost the exact same density, but it's going straight up to 45 feet instead of that step back.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yeah, potentially that could happen if it is not rezoned.
Okay. And maybe just one more question here. So I am looking at this lot or this, it's not even a lot, it's a group of lots, but these two blocks. And they are a little funky because there is a change in the direction of the road, which sort of creates, you know, funny block shape. And likely because of that, they didn't put in an alley between the houses. That is one thing that I'm seeing that maybe looks different here is abnormal for us to not see these houses with an alleyway. How, I'm trying to understand like how something like that happens in this area, but it doesn't happen in a bunch of other areas.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think you're absolutely correct. It's the transition, how the roads shift direction that that basically limit the alley use in some of these houses. If it was a standard grid system, especially in these older subdivision, they would all have alleys behind them. But I think it's just because of the the road system makes this weird transition and bend towards State Street right here that kind of limited the alley on some of these lots.
Okay. And so then if we go over to Ellis Avenue and we look at some houses that I would say are in a pretty darn similar circumstance. One potential difference is that these houses along Ellis do have an alley in the back, which would require, which would basically generate almost an additional 10 feet setback beyond the property line.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that is correct. The the ones that belong Alice, they, I think most of those subdivisions are platted with an alley. So they're the that transition or the they basically do have the alley separating them. And the transition setbacks would not apply because you'd have to have a budding. You have to have a budding property line for the transitions to apply.
So if the, if these houses did have an alleyway, which I think maybe a couple of them do.
Some do.
Couple of them do. Then the setbacks are going to be increased because there's the width of the alleyway and then there's the setback on the property line as well.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that is correct.
Okay. And the step down doesn't, step down doesn't change if there's an alleyway or not an alleyway.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the transitional setback for the height only applies if you have an R1C abutting R2 directly. So if there's an alley or right away between it, that transitional setback doesn't apply and you're just abiding by standard zoning code.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor. I have a question about the alleyway here. And in my experience, in many, many parts of the city, there are no alleyways next to another zone. Could you talk to me about why this is different? I'm seeking to understand.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the the reason here is because it is the, it is an old subdivision that was plotted in 1910, 1920s throughout the North End. And when they did that, they platted them with alleys. The the more modern subdivisions that you see that came in after the fact in the 50s, 60s, 70s, they did not include alleys at that time. It wasn't, was not a standard process in the subdivision sign.
Mr. Mayor, follow up. And because traditionally in the 50s and beyond that they were larger lots. And so how many?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that is correct. A lot of these old subdivisions were plotted at 25 foot wide lots by 115 with a theory that you would, you know, combine multiple lots together to get the size you want. Whereas if you came back in the, you know, 50s, 60s, 70s, they were larger lots sitting on on larger pieces of property.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Dave, just want to clarify some of Councilmember Hallie Burton's questioning. So if we're looking at this, am I correct in seeing there's only three properties that don't have an alley between this rezone and properties the south of them? Is it those three east of 18th?
Um, I think, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think there are about three lots on the west side that do not have an alley. If I had to guess, and there are about three, maybe three lots on the other side of that eight boroughs at 18th Street that also do not have an alley. And then if you get beyond that, then they turn the, then there is an alley that extends off to 17.
Great. So the red line is only hiding alley for those properties facing West Washington. And that goes all the way from between those two streets. No.
Who knows?
I I guess I can't see beyond that red line. I'm just curious if that, what the alleyway looks like.
I'm wondering if this picture might be better.
Raise your hand if you have an alley in your backyard. I'm just kidding, kidding.
Essentially, there's an alley here, comes up dead end right up there. And there's an alley and it ends it, it ends right about there.
Great. Thank you. That answers my question.
All right. Counsel, any more questions for staff? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion. Go at once.
Give me a minute.
All right, we'll take. All right. We'll just, we'll just be quiet. We're cool.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I'm gonna move that we deny CAR 25 dash. I'm gonna move that we deny CAR twenty five dash zero 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 eleven, seventeen oh five through eighteen seventeen West Resegu Street and seven zero three and seven zero four North Eighteenth Street. A rezone of approximately two point two acres from R two H with a historic district overlay to R one C with a historic district overlay.
Stuck it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just add a couple of comments here. So I'm trying hard to figure out what is different here than any other rezone that we do across the city. And people who come in who are wanting to not have a development happen in their backyard. But we have zoned something in a specific way to encourage development in a specific area. I have, I have zero concerns that any of you as neighbors are going to bulldoze your houses or let them fall out of compliance. You put so much work into them, you care about those houses, you should, they're beautiful houses, it's a beautiful neighborhood. And I don't see any of you letting a house go, going to non-conforming or non-contributing and then something being built upright, right there. The concern really to me is, you know, what ends up popping up behind? What ends up popping behind these houses? And so I'm trying to figure out what is different here than any other area where we see similar zoning across the board. And we can say that we think that there was a technical error in the map, but if we look at the map itself, it's a pretty straight line across the board. It's been this way since the sixties and I can't see anything that specifically has changed that would require that rezoning there. I do understand that although you are zoned R two, the houses don't seem R two, they seem much older than that, but so do the houses right behind you at the same time. I was stuck on, you know, what do we, how do we then tell anybody who is along Ellis that they can't just rezone every single one of their houses down and ask for a rezone? And what is going to make anything different there after we went through a really large effort to make sure that we're building density along State Street? And the exception there was really that alleyway. There is an alleyway along these stretches that does provide an additional setback, but it doesn't do that for every single one of the houses here, it does it for just a few. If I was sitting here looking at this and every single house didn't have that same additional setback, then maybe I could say, yes, we're gonna do it. But I don't see anything specific here where there was an error in the map. I don't see an error with, you know, planning and zoning's findings. They voted against, staff recommended going against it. And I don't see anything here that's leading to the change or anything else needed for a rezone. This is the first time anybody has ever come into council since I've been here asking to downzone their property to prevent denser development behind it. I do understand the concerns there of something being high and not having that step back. But at the same time, I understand that this is an area where we have decided that we want to have more density and it makes sense in this area, you know, this is right next to State Street, it's right next to grocery stores, it's right next to schools. And so I understand what you all are trying to do, I appreciate what you all are trying to do, but I cannot see within the zoning code, why would we allow this and then not allow it in every other area that doesn't want to see a denser development or a taller building behind them?
Councilmember Morales?
Yeah, thank you. I, this was a very unique application, but it definitely felt similar to a lot of applications that we, that we hear here. And just in fact, even last week. And when I think about the, the, you know, the impacts that the folks are, that folks are worried about or concerned, is the word concerned. You know, they're founded in kind of the uncertain reality of what could be. But when we look at the reality of what could actually go in these lots, you have to take into setbacks, parking requirements. There's a lot of restrictions that even if something is zoned to be able to, to have something of that nature. There are other things that could limit it from having the number of units, for example. When we look at, you know, these properties, you know, I, I appreciate the neighbor that, that talked about their concern for another Travis. And I get that, that's five stories, that's a big, a big project. And when I look at the properties here that would benefit if, if approved tonight from transition standards, it's about half of them, I think. Yeah, one of those, one of those properties that backs up to two of these, these properties in this rezone application has an open application right now for adding a second story. So that's great news. But I, it's actually this kind of conversation that I were seeing communities across the country adopting single stair building development code to allow for a lighter density, so that you could build a four-story structure on one lot that has, you can see through it, it's not massing, it's not land assembly, all, every single property bought up in one big wall. And I think it's, this is one of those reasons why we, we should really be considering that here in Boise, because it provides for a much better lighter density in neighborhoods like this that, that want the comforts of housing that looks more like theirs. And so, you know, we do, we do hear those concerns and we also take into account, you know, those people, you know, the extra floors worth of, of people that could maybe one day live there, who knows how soon, hundred years from now, whenever it is. You know, in terms of the, the need for us to be able to have housing where it makes sense. And so I think, yeah, I just don't see, you know, compelling argument for where the protection is needed, that the development that could happen right now in any of these lots would cause major harm. And I, you know, I brought up, I brought up Alfred Sally in Philadelphia. Lived there for a couple of years on a church mission and, and it's a, it's an amazing place everyone goes because it's a three hundred year old neighborhood. And they have a seven-story brand new development right next to it, it's jarring, it's right next to it. And so I understand, you know, the, the concerns of, of what that could look like in that MX three portion and how there might be some really good ways of breaking that up between here and there if we could do some lighter density. And of course, that comes down to the property owners, hopefully these owners south of you are getting, you know, enjoying this stable neighborhood as much as you are and not looking to, to develop or to move for your sake, for your comfort. But I, I'm just not seeing the argument for, or that those concerns could cause material impact.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with what my fellow council members have said. What I'd add though is I know that when we're looking at projects, it's really important that we're not imposing conditions on neighboring properties, right? Like we can ask the applicant to do street frontage improvements or, you know, certain conditions on their property, but we cannot impose conditions on a neighboring property in that application. What is so unique, I think, to me about this application is that it wouldn't impose conditions on the neighboring property. It would, by rezoning this property, it then prohibits or limits or impacts what can be built on the neighboring properties, which I think is an interesting was also, I have not, I've worked in land use in this city and one way or another for eight, nine years almost and have never seen that request come through. And to me, that's the, I mean, if the, if we were looking at the reverse and the property wanted us to rezone next to you, that would prohibit you from building an AU or covering that porch or something like that. That would feel imposing on the neighboring property. So for that reason, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around it and will, and for the reasons stated in the staff report for sure, but will be supporting the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief. I agree with the points my fellow council members have made and I do think there are some protections afforded in the neighborhood by being in the historic overlay that we don't see within other areas of the town. And I agree that, you know, this was zoned at the R two in nineteen sixty-six and I can't have trouble saying that there was an error made that now needs correction fifty-nine years later. And you guys, I, I think of this and I know we're talking about, and I do too, my home, my value and what we've done and we've all worked really hard. If you're a homeowner, you, you have worked very hard for your homes, put a lot of sweat and blood into it and you live in a very beautiful neighborhood. But in actuality, we are all caretakers of these homes. These homes are gonna outlive us, these neighborhoods are gonna outlive us. And we're taking a look at a zone that's gonna last for the city for years. And that's the lens I'm taking a look is what's this gonna be at in fifty years or a hundred years? And without finding the error that has been made, understanding this, this, we say where's the line gonna be drawn, the line was drawn. And I think it's fitting that it keeps within the R two. Thank you.
Just want to make a comment on one thing that Councilmember Halliburton said about R two. I was, I was thinking about this and the appropriateness of R two here and just went to the zoning code user guide. Compact residential zoning is located in many older neighborhoods such as the north end, but can be found throughout Boise, making up six percent of the total land in the, in the city. The standards for R two are modeled from the guidance and blueprint Boise for compact neighborhoods. The dimensional standards and allowed housing types are informed by chapter three, compact neighborhoods feature small lots and interconnected network of sidewalks and streets. And in some cases, alley loaded garages, detached, single family homes on small lots are predominant. But a variety of housing types, including duplexes, triplexes, townhomes and apartments and condominium could be allowed. Residential densities are between six and fifteen units an acre. Neighborhood activity centers with retail, restaurants and employment and other services are encouraged within walking distance. Pedestrian oriented streetscapes are desired. When I read that, this seems like it fits quite neatly in it. When I zoom out on the north end, I see a lot of R two. Unfortunately, I think for the applicants, I think you're asking for a downzone in a time when both locally, I anticipate soon at the state level and then across the nation, there's a, a wave of, of upzoning intending to make the best use of our land within this housing crisis. I'll also say that we, we share the values that you have for what makes your neighborhood so great. We may not agree on, on specifics about what what is a, a threat to those neighborhoods. I'll just say that we remain committed to protecting the historic overlay. We also have work to do about those historic preservation guidelines. I'm sure there could be consideration of, of setback or other types of transition standards as it relates to, as it relates to historic areas, that, that's a consideration that could happen. We may be a couple of years away from that, but that, that is possible. And I, I also view, it would, based on what was described to me, it would not be weird for, for I think us to see applications from across the street looking for R two and that, that would be more common and expected to us than a, a downzone here. So yeah, for those reasons, I'll be supporting the motion.
All right, clerk.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, I don't see any further business, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
All right. Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned.